...Republic for which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Miss Onward the roll please.
Here.
Here.
Jason Ward two.
Here.
Kerry Roth Ward three.
Here.
Calvin Cooley Ward four.
Here.
Kerry Fox Ward five.
Here.
Matt Ren Ward six.
Thank you, Meredith. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from our previous meeting that was held on January the third. Council, you've had an opportunity to look these minutes over and that would be the chance, an opportunity to provide any edits, additions, deletions, or if there are none, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We will start off with a set of very special recognitions. Chief McCann, if you will do the honors for us, please, sir.
Thank you, ma'am and counsel. I appreciate you a lot in this time to honor and recognize our police officers for lifesaving awards and for Officer of the Year, Employee of the Year, and Supervisor of the Year. We're going to start with the lifesaving awards, which some are a couple of years old, but things get hectic and I hate that they haven't been honored already. We're going to start with, on May 23rd, 2016, we received a call at a residence in the city of Cartersville of a person that was possibly drowning. Strangely enough, three investigators arrived on the scene before patrol and fire and EMS. Sergeant Adam Belcher, Sergeant Greg Sparassio, and investigator Patrick Hooton, who resigned last month to take a position at the U.S. Secret Service that is currently in their academy, will not be here, but we had already given him an award. Anyway, make a long story short, they arrived at the residence, found the girl, started CPR, and basically saved her life. And she's alive today because of what they did, and I'd like to bring them up and give them the award.
This is Sergeant Adam Belcher.
Sergeant Greg Sparassio. And if we could, we'll do pictures after I get done. The next officer, we've already presented him an award. I took it back from him, so we'll get presented again publicly. He was off duty, going to the store in his own vehicle on July 17th, 2018, with his daughter in the car. He came upon a car that was involved in an accident and it had caught on fire. And the fire was spreading quickly. He was able to rescue two of the passengers out of the car and save their life. It's Corporal Justin Lucian, who is our SRO at Cartersville High School. Thank you, Justin. Our next one occurred on December 19th, 2018, at a residence in Cartersville. An elderly lady had a pistol or a revolver and was threatening suicide. Her family, she was locked in a bedroom. Her family had called the police. Lieutenant Richard Holly, who is a supervisor, shift commander at the police department, arrived on the scene, obtained a shield, went in, negotiated with this lady, and when she raised the gun up, the cylinder fell open and he was able to knock the gun out of her hand and basically save her life. Okay, now we're going to start with the officer, actually Employee of the Year. It's going to be Kelly Woodard. Kelly, basically, the chief secretary retired last year and somebody moved into her position and Kelly moved over to the criminal investigations. We're lucky to have her. She's a sworn police officer who came from the district attorney's office and prior to that worked for us. So when she left the district attorney's office, I quickly called her and asked her to come to the PD. The good thing for us is she's sworn and we're going to use her as an intelligence analyst and she's worked out really well. So Kelly, come on up. Our Supervisor of the Year has already been up here. Sergeant Adam Belcher, who is the supervisor in Criminal Investigations Division. He does an outstanding job. He handles a lot of different things that come up and I wear him out. And the last award I got is the Officer of the Year. This officer was educated in Cartersville, played sports in Cartersville, went to work with the police department about two and a half years ago. He works night shift. He's out there doing the people's work aggressively. He's done an outstanding job this year. He probably makes more drug cases than anybody else at the PD and which reflects our crime stats, which by the way are down like 16% overall for between last, or 2017 and 2018. All of these guys do that. So, come on up, Justin. And that's it. Thank you very much. If you want to take pictures.
Chief, if everybody could come back who received an award so we could take a picture with you and the mayor and any of your staff you would like.
Okay.
Take one in the front. Rebecca will take it.
Okay.
Yes, let's do it now.
Yeah.
Yeah, because y'all don't want to hang around for the rest of the meeting, do you? Sure they do, it's so exciting.
Thank you all.
I was starting to feel real safe in here. Now it's not going to be quite so. Would have been a good time to roll through a stop sign until just a moment ago. Thank you, Chief, for those recognitions and they're all well deserved and to every officer that takes the time to keep our community safe, we certainly appreciate their efforts and so happy to spotlight just a few of them tonight. Chief Carter, you have the next item, please.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Thank you very much. We respectfully requesting authorization for the mayor to sign a letter addressed to the Georgia State Fire Marshal. This letter verifies that our city is, and our department is requesting to have our fire marshal staff deputized as fire scene investigators. This is an annual process. It will occur the first Tuesday in February at the state capitol as part of firefighter recognition day. Our staff has been deputized every year since 2009. This is a change to the process that occurred last year. It's starting in 2018. We respectfully request authorization for the signature.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Hampton.
Good afternoon, Mayor and counsel. This is a second reading for proposed new incremental growth rider that would benefit our extra-large power customers, who are largest power users on our system, to give them some kind of incentive for continual growth and continual power usage on our systems. They're in jobs, they're using power, and we wanted to do something to help them out. So you guys have the rider in front of you and unless you guys have any questions for me, I was going to hopefully request that you approve it.
Any questions, Mayor, on this?
I just want to make one comment. Correct me if I'm wrong, this affects like four customers, is that right? Four large customers or five?
Right. Now, we've got, we've got more customers possible there on other rates that they want to stay on because it's more beneficial to them. So yes, right now it would be about four.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Chief, should have just had to stay on up here.
Thank you once again.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Good news, actually. We're respectfully requesting approval to receive a donation of equipment valued at $15,232.72. This equipment is being received from Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation. It's going to be used to help us with our swift water rescue issues that we have on the Etowah. We have approximately seven miles of jurisdiction on the Etowah that we are responsible for. And since 2014, we have been seeing a marked increase on the river as far as usage and also rescues, and it's just slowly increasing. So anyway, this, this particular grant of equipment, donation of equipment, is going to allow us to perform better on the rivers, it'll be safer for the public safety, and also for our public. So we respectfully requesting permission for us to receive this donation of equipment. I would note, this is the second time that Firehouse Subs Foundation has provided equipment for the city of Cartersville. They are a very strong partner for public safety in the community. I know we see the ads on the TV, but they actually do back it up.
Wonderful. All right. I don't know that anybody can have anything to add to that, but Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Porter, you have the next set of items. Kick us off.
First item is the Dotter Ferry Road Temporary License Agreement. We crawled the city plots and land out there on Dotter Ferry Road last June, about 25 plus or minus acres. We're having a contract with Smith Douglas Homes to continue removing dirt out there up to a certain point that until we, you know, they have a level they can go up to, it's not going to affect our ability down the road to build out there. This agreement will go through December 2019 and recommend for your approval.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
The next item, Mayor, is two invoices, a recommended repair for Matthew's Garage. First one, the vehicle's actually in the shop now. Progressive Insurance is actually the party at fault from the other driver in the gas department pickup truck. The estimate from Matthew's Garage is lower over $5,800, but I would recommend approval up to $7,000 for that vehicle repaired. Once they break it down, they'll probably find some additional damage that, again, is going to be paid for by the other parties' insurance. The second one is the repair cost to a fire department vehicle at $5,381.2. Our final cost of that is our $1,000 deductible. I recommend both those for your approval.
Thank you, Dan. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next item is the Barracuda email server appliance. The annual renewal for that is $8,487.60. It's a budget item. I recommend it for your approval.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Final one for you, Dan.
Yes, sir. This is for the electric department. They, for a new rate they need to have in Coggsdale Utility Software. The estimated cost is that. It's $5,880. It's not budgeted, but it will be paid for by the electric department.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dan. Mr. Sanders, you've got a couple?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. This first item is a purchase of up to $40,000 of asphalt from CW Matthews. The county is going to use this asphalt to pave Burnt Hickory Road from West Avenue to about 1258 Burnt Hickory Road. There's a pavement joint there and it'll be paid far from the 2014 splosh and we recommend your approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Tommy on this item?
Are they paving any more of that or were just paving to that joint?
They, they resurfaced from the project near 411 all the way to this pavement joint a couple of years ago. And so this will finish out the portion that's, that hadn't been resurfaced recently.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion. All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Thank you, sir. This, this next item is to purchase 27 dumpsters for our solid waste division, our commercial customers. The dumpsters, we have new customers plus the old dumpsters. The bottoms rust out occasionally and we just need to restock. The total is[978.62][978.64]$23,511 from Based Baker Waste Equipment. That's 23,511. It's a budgeted item.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve the best bid.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes, from Mayor and counsel. We took bids for a compact excavator for Parks Recreation Department, received 11 bids. I'm recommending the low bid that meets specifications, which is also the low bid from Reinhardt Equipment Company in the amount of $50,173.1. This includes the Bobcat and it includes attachments of a digging bucket, a grading bucket, and then a 30-inch flail mower. This is a budgeted item.
Do you, does the department currently have one of those?
We do not have one of those. We have two other pieces of Bobcat equipment, but we do not have any excavator.
What do you, I'm just, I'm not saying we don't need it. I'm just curious, what are you going to use that arm?
Well, the last several years, we have added, although public works helped us tremendously, we've added several miles of roadside trails. We have to keep those trimmed. We have a lot of ditches in Dillinger Park that needs, that has a lot of silt. It's flat and we'll be doing a lot of grading on those. It will be very well used.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Any discussion? Chair will entertain a motion.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Greg. Mr. Jones, time for the high-dollar portion of the show.
Good evening, everyone. I apologize for my voice, but we will muddle through this.
Sounds better than you usually do.
Yeah, a little deeper, right?
Yeah.
Okay. First up is our Main Street Water and Sewer Easement Clearing. This is approximately 6,600 feet. We'll be clearing about 30 feet wide. It has pretty thick growth on it right now, but we don't want it to get any worse, so we took bids for clearing that. The low bid came back from Hickory Ridge at $17,280 and we recommend that for your approval.
Thank you. Questions or comments? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, Bob.
Yes, sir. Next up, we had another screw pump to break during October. This is something we're all familiar with. This is our oldest model. It's a 1973 vintage. Quite frankly, we were about to run out of parts to replace on this thing, but it found the one that we haven't touched yet. This is a six-inch diameter shaft that actually wrung in half. It obviously renders the pump useless and, as everyone knows who lives here, we have had some considerable rainfall since October of last year. Our choices were to put money into renting mobile bypass pumping to take up this, this additional loss. That cost would have been somewhere in the neighborhood of $10,000 to $12,000 based on having done it before. We elected to put that money into repairing this pump for a longer-term solution. The shaft, unfortunately, is no longer manufactured. It had to be custom-made by Southern Machine. The total price with installation and new bearings that were damaged, being replaced, came to $23,156.26. We recommend that for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Did you?
Yes, sir. Up next is a topic that we've been discussing for close to three years now in various formats. In March of last year, the city was issued a new wastewater discharge permit. In that permit were stricter discharge guidelines and in order to meet those guidelines long-term, we will have to undergo a fairly extensive construction project at the wastewater plant. Without going into the great detail, there will be numerous new structures that will be constructed. There will be upgrades to existing structures. There will be a tertiary filtration system, chemical feed systems that don't exist. Currently, there will be a SCADA system, a computer control system, because the adjustments to the plant will need to be done in much greater detail and much more frequent. It's really beyond the ability of a single operator to manage. Bids were taken from October to December last year. We received four bidders and the low bid was from Archer Western and that bid was for $37,562,882.64. While I hesitate to call that a low bid, that was the lowest bid that we had and would recommend that for your approval. I would like to add a couple of things. One is this, as we talked about in work session, this is in excess of the number that we had estimated and have discussed for quite a while. I think we are all familiar with the cost of construction in other areas that the city's engaged in and even if you're building something personally, you see it. That applies to this as well. We have identified sources of revenue to pay for that overage and we feel confident that it can be managed. And I would remind both counsel and those who are listening that the rate increases that have been put in place for the last several years were in anticipation of this very thing. And the, the ability, the financial strength that we have going into this is what is going to allow us to be, to construct this project even at this price and to not have any significant rate shock. This, this is what that was for over the last few years. So with that, I would ask that, that you approve the bid from Archer Western and would also ask that the approval allow the mayor to sign a formal notice to Archer Western that we have accepted their bid contingent upon review by legal.
I, I'd just like to add, I know there's been a ton of work that's gone into you and several others in the department and throughout the city, so I appreciate that work. This is something that's, I mean, this is something that's mandated that everybody's got to do. This isn't a result of us not doing something we were supposed to do in the past.
That's right.
This is something that's just kind of been dropped down on us from upon high and I mean, we have, we have, this is a new mandate that we have got to reach this by this deadline.
That's correct. We, as we stated earlier, I forgot to mention, we, we have roughly 36 months to get this done.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Go ahead, Bob.
Yes, sir. Next up is related to the last item. We engaged the engineering firm of Hazen and Sawyer several years ago to do the design work on the plan, prepare bid specifications. That obviously is done. The next phase of their work will be engineering oversight of the construction process. The city has, in every major plant project in the past, retained the services of a professional engineer to provide a resident engineer. They will oversee the project day-to-day. They will ensure compliance with the specifications that they developed and essentially they ensure that we get every dollar of value of that $37 million, that there's no corners cut, that things are built as they should be. And it's really a critical service for us because honestly, in-house, we don't have the expertise to do that work. Hazen, when we initially engaged them and were doing cost estimates, they told us that typically what they see is 6.5% of construction cost. And that's what we have consistently been told to expect for this service. And the price they've provided is right on that target. So in order for Hazen to provide those services from the first day of construction through startup of the new plant, so this will encompass the entire construction period, commissioning and startup, they have proposed a price of $2,355,078. I recommend that for your approval.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is it, is it possible that by having them on site that we can recoup?
It is certainly possible. I would stop very short of guaranteeing.
Oh, yeah.
Anything like that. But that is what they are there to do, is to see the construction project evolve. And as they see opportunities for savings, they will certainly be there to both bring them up to us and, if necessary, to design them on the fly. They also give us a good bit of value in that their knowledge of seeing that plant built and having designed it, as construction difficulties come up, they can propose modifications that won't affect the end product, but that may help the efficiency of construction. There again, you, you do tend to have some savings that way.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Final one for you, Bob.
Yes, sir. Last up, we have for some time now been working on a pump station stabilization project at the water plant. That project is, is essentially complete. We are on punch list items now. In the middle of December, we reassembled the building, put the pumps back together and did a test run. And one pump started, ran fine. The other pump did not. They traced the problem back to, trade name is called a multi-lin, but it's a motor protection relay. It's much like a breaker in your house. And this thing monitors this high horsepower pump and if there's any irregularity in the pump, it, it tells the pump to shut off rather than destroying itself. Well, we found that the, the relay that was causing the, the error is a 1992 vintage piece of equipment. It's no longer supported by GE and its sister piece of equipment next door that did come on and run. In doing the diagnostic, we found out that actually that piece of equipment was improperly installed in the past and actually has not been providing any protection to that motor in the 20-some-odd years that it's been in there. So we asked for a proposal from our contractor to replace the faulty unit and to replace the incorrect unit. And they have given us a price of $22,909 to do both. This is the second change order to this project. With this change order, we would be at 11.6% over the bid price. And I'll remind you, the first change order, we had to do some rather extensive additional drilling and micropile installation to get the building stabilized. So to be perfectly honest with you, I'm, I'm very happy to be at this point at this price, but I do recommend that for your approval. but I do recommend that for your approval.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions or discussion? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second, the motion. All favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Tom, before you come, we have two items to add. Chair will entertain a motion to add those two items.
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay. All favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Two items added. Mr. Lovell.
Mayor, the first item is on January 14th of this year, the city received an antilatum notice from FOIA and Associates representing a Larry Martin who was involved in an automobile accident with a city employee on July 30th, 2019. At this time, we are recommending the city denies the antilatum claim and the matter will be turned over to the insurance company for whatever resolution is appropriate.
So we've got a resolution denying that antilatum claim that's on-- being presented to us, right?
Correct, sir.
All right. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. All favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Mayor, the next item is on January 4th of this year, we received an antilatum notice from Zacharia Law Firm regarding an automobile accident at the city of Cartersville involving one of our garbage trucks on December 26th, 2018. At this time, the accident investigation has not been completed, so I don't believe there's any way the city can actually make a decision one way or another with respect to liability. So I'm recommending you deny this antilatum notice at this time.
Thank you. So we've got another resolution denying antilatum claim. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to deny.
Actually, we need a motion to approve the resolution denying.
To deny.
Thank you, sir. All favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Reinhardt, you've got the monthly financial report.
I will, Mayor and Council will be looking at the November 2018 and comparing to November 2017. The general fund revenues increased over the last November by $1.6 million. Expenses decreased by $164,000. Two areas of item-- two areas of revenue that I look at on a monthly basis, local office and sales tax have an increase there of about $194,000. Willing permits and inspection fees have an increase there of about $87,000. In the water and sewer fund, revenues increased over the last November by $1.5 million. Expenses increased by $1.6 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, and increased capital expenses. In the gas fund, revenues increased over the last November by $862,000. Expenses increased by $2.7 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase of gas, increased debt service, and increased capital expenses. In the electric fund, revenues increased over last year by $1 million. Expenses increased by $215,000. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, increased cost of purchasing electricity, and increased capital expenses. In the stormwater fund, revenues decreased last year-- over last year by about $4,000, while expenses increased by $316,000. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. And I will note here that we did purchase a couple of vehicles in 2018, but they were not delivered and paid for in 2019. So that's the big difference there. In the solid waste fund, revenues increased over last year by $23,000 and expenses increased by $48,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. Once again, we did purchase a vehicle in 2018, but it was not delivered and paid for until this year. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues increased over last November by $8,000. Expenses increased by $143,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses.
Thank you. Questions for Tom in his report?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Anderson, step forward, please. See, the last time I get to scream out, "Mr. Anderson," people that watch Matrix movies will miss that.
[laughing]
And you don't have to listen anymore either.
Well, I don't mind.
I wanted to just call you forward for-- this is your last city council meeting.
It is my last city council meeting.
I'm sure you're already aware of that. And Kathy will be happy to have you home on first and third Thursdays, I'm sure.
Take her today.
Or she'll find some reason to be gone knowing you'll be home. But I will say there is-- I would challenge anybody to find somebody that loves this city more than you do or that bleeds a deeper shade of purple than you do. And the number of lives that you've touched and improved through recreation and your dedication to the city is immeasurable, as are your contributions. We'll say a formal goodbye to you at the end of the month, but this being your last council meeting, I wanted to just eyeball you and say that perfect to you face-to-face and give you an opportunity to make any comments here.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And you know, it's the same old adage, it's not been a job. I've loved every minute of it, from being hired by WK all the way to now. It's always been fun, always been a challenge, and I've always had support from the administration and Mayor and City Council, which goes a long way. And then I've got a great staff, so, and it's been good. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Greg, you're welcome.
Thank you. [applause]
All right. Any other business that needs to come before council this evening? And yes, sir, please, if you would, step forward and if you would, please state your name and your address for our clerk, please.
I'm Ken Fane. Live 109 Grassdale Road. I think you and I have emailed once or twice.
Yes, sir.
We became aware there's going to be a sidewalk installed on Grassdale Road between Joe Frank Harris and Tennessee Street, I mean, Casper Road. We-- a group of us like to oppose that and ask before y'all vote to put a sidewalk in, you speak with the residents. Some of us, some are here, have had negative contact with some of the traffic that we got walking up Grassdale Road and we're opposed to the sidewalk.
Okay. I will tell you, thank you for your comments. Number one, I will tell you that the design of that sidewalk is still underway and still being determined and that before any action is taken, there will be meetings with the public to show them exactly what we plan to do and there'll be a time to comment at that point. So I'm just saying that we-- before, I understand. I understand your position and I understand your concerns, but we haven't really shown you what we're doing yet. It does include some upgrades to the road for the people that are driving down the road as well. And again, I appreciate your comments and for coming here and voicing those concerns. My promise to you is that you're going to be informed and as will all the neighbors and all the property owners up and down that road as to what is being proposed and perhaps, I don't know, if we're going to change your mind, but perhaps we're going to keep you informed as to what's going to be proposed moving forward.
You have a timeline on that?
I do not. I don't-- and I don't want to put you on the spot, Mr. Sanders, but is there any general timeframe? I don't want to hold to a specific date. Our Public Works Director, Tommy Sanders, who's heading up the project.
I've spoken with him once.
Hey, I talked to you on the phone. Good to meet you, person. We had a teleconference with G Doc last Friday and the next step would be going through the acquisition process to acquire an engineer. We've got to comply with the Brooks Act, which is a federal act that requires you to do a qualification-based selection. And then it would be-- they will issue a project framework agreement and authorize the federal funds for the project, for the design of the project. Right now, that's since the federal government shut down, they don't really know when that authorization will take place. But once that happens, the design process, we'll have to go through the full plan development process since it has federal funds. Environmental, have to do environmental document and have, like you mentioned, public meetings. We'll have at least one public open house meeting where the public can submit their comments and that'll be part of the environmental process. But they did say that they're just-- when they do authorize funds, it's just for design. They weren't authorizing construction funds until the 2021 cycle. So you're probably looking at a minimum of a year and a half or two years for the preliminary stuff and then construction may be somewhere around 2021. That would be about the timeframe. Thank you.
And Tommy, probably realistically, nothing publicly will happen for probably three or four months related to it.
Probably longer than that.
Yeah.
It'll take us that long to acquire an engineer.
Right.
And I would say we'd be lucky, you know, to have anything for the public in nine months, maybe a year.
Nine months, okay. So. And as far as, this is in conjunction with the county, right?
That's correct. It's the county approached us, about 75% of that stretch of road is actually in the county and about 25% or so is in the city. So it's a joint project between the county and the city. The city's just taking the lead on the administration of the project.
And we received federal-- I mean, I know you've been talking about the funding, but we did receive grants in regards to this from the federal government.
Right. It's called a TAP grant, a Transportation Alternatives Program, is to provide other means of transport other than driving. So you know, the sidewalk is for pedestrians, so the grant is specifically for pedestrian traffic along that corridor.
And I know a lot of the emails that I've gotten are concerned with, well, one side of the road versus the other. Eventually, when we get to that design phase, that's when the engineer will determine if the sidewalk is going there, which side of the road would be best for-- that's not already predetermined, right?
Well, that's correct, but from just a, you know--
I got you, but one--
Engineering, just a--
From your little bit of experience.
Yeah, from my little bit of experience, I mean, one side is high and one side is sort of flat. And the side that the north side, you know, there's houses that sit within-- that are 10-foot higher than the road that sit probably 15 feet or so off the road. So it-- and the other side is mostly flat except for there's a few houses that maybe sit about four feet, four to five feet lower than the road. So it would seem to me that the most likely scenario would be for the sidewalk to be on the south side of the road.
But that'll be determined--
Once it's designed.
Yes. All right. Thank you so much.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
So how are you notified, the people? Someone mentioned in the newspaper, well, I don't get the paper, so.
We'll make sure. Tommy, we'll make sure that all those property owners are notified? Yes, sir. We'll send letters to every property owner that's touched by the project. They'll all get-- Either side of the-- on either side of the road, obviously. Yes, they'll all get an invitation to the public information open house, PIOF is what that meeting's called.
Okay. So at that time, it's still not written in stone. At that time, we could still stop the sidewalk construction or is that going to be too late to?
That's certainly an option because there wouldn't have been any federal funds that have been released to construct the sidewalks.
Yeah. That is all part of the design process and after that public hearing, there's a few more internal reviews and then approves of whatever the final plan is submitted, that is then submitted to the feds. And if that plan is not submitted, that of course grant will end. And if the plan is submitted, then the federal government still has to review and approve it to start the construction part of it. So there are a lot of places along the ways where you as neighbors have the right to object and interject in that process.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for your comments. Any other business needs to come before city council this evening? All right, just as a note, I know there's other people here. We're going to adjourn the city council meeting. We're going to have about a five-minute recess and then the meeting that y'all are here for, the animal control board, which is also comprised of members of this council, will convene then to take that up, but that'll be separate of this city council meeting. And that being said, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
We're adjourned.
All right.